Alright, everybody, welcome to the Scientology stream.
Hey, hey, hey.
Hey, hey, hey.
It was not my thing that I wanted. I didn't even think about soundboards. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Welcome to Scientology stream. Uh, we do this every Thursday night around, uh, 9:00 PM Pacific. I'm joined by the media wench here in studio and tonight we have a, oh, say hi.
Hey, hey, hey.
Hey, I'm all say hi, media wench, and you're all hi, media wench. Cause that's not fucking whack or whatever. Um.
Trying to make me hacky.
So you can check out our website, ecoplexmedia.com and like everything you're gonna need to find out about us is on there. Welcome, everybody on Twitch. Welcome, anybody listening on Ice Cast and welcome to the people on YouTube. We're not paying attention to you on YouTube, so move on over to Twitch at twitch.tv slash Ecoplex Media and we'll see your, uh, chat. It'll even overlay on the screen. So, um, without any further ado, uh, we have, we're gonna be joined by a special guest this evening. I've been looking forward to this. I don't know since yesterday when I emailed him. This is a man who my first impression of, if I'm not mistaken, was, uh, in a video where folks were, uh, protesting the cult of Scientology. And I believe he was walking around saying something along the lines of, "Welcome to the Golden Age of Xenu." And, uh, and that was my first impression. Anybody who doesn't know, I don't talk about this a lot, but a good friend of mine got, uh, sucked up by the cult and I think she ended up over in Clearwater and that's where my kinda journey with, at least investigating and talking shit about Scientology began. Um, I hope she got out. I have, nobody's heard from her, but that's kinda where I'm coming from. She all could tell I'm talking a little bit quick because I'm, uh, pretty excited here, so.
We also have a local friend who was affected by Scientology because her husband passed away because of it.
Oh yeah, that's right. That's right. Well, without any further ado, we're gonna bring on a city council candidate for Clearwater, Florida, Mark Bunker. How you doing, man?
I'm doing great. Thanks for having me on.
Oh, well, thanks for coming on. We were all, we're all fucking excited and shit.
Anytime we get, uh, something Scientology adjacent or local politics adjacent, we get, uh, we get very excited about it. It's, uh, something that we are very interested in. Cause two things that we're very interested in.
Well, good. Uh, you know, it's a fascinating story Scientology. I got sucked into it, um, well, really back in 1980, when I was watching 60 Minutes, Mike Wallace came to do a story on Clearwater and I was back in my hometown of Oshkosh, Wisconsin at the time. And then when I moved to LA, uh, I was living in a house in 99, uh, in the Hollywood Hills and the woman who lived, uh, in this place before me had been a Scientologist and apparently didn't give a forwarding address, cause I kept getting all of her junk mail, like the Freedom magazines and celebrity magazines. So I'd be reading those and became increasingly interested in it. Used to wander around, uh, the LA buildings and say, "Hey, what goes on in here?" And they'd give me a tour. Uh, show me my own private screening of their orientation film. And, uh, was reading more and more about it and I just kept getting more, uh, shocked at what this organization has been allowed to do over the decades. So I've, I've been speaking out against their fraud and abuse for about 20 years now.
Yeah.
And no one in Clearwater in politics is, is really willing to take them on.
Are they, are they just like, are they scared of getting harassed by Scientology or they just don't wanna touch it? Because that would maybe affect a lot of their votes.
Yeah, uh, there's, there's a great fear of, of taking them on because they know how powerful Scientology can be in setting out to destroy somebody. Um, now I've shown for 20 years that I'm not afraid. So, you know, whatever they're gonna throw at me, I'm, I'm ready for. But, uh, for other folks who have a political career, which I don't have, I've never been a politician, so this is a really fascinating experience for me. Uh, they're just afraid that if, i- if they go after them, that's the end of their career. Scientology will fund an opponent. They'll put up smear sites about you. They'll try to discredit you in every humanly possible way. Uh, and when that, uh, doesn't work, they go to the Markabian attacks. That's the, that's the alien space fleet that came and invaded us, uh.
It's like going nuclear, but going, what was that, Markabian you said?
Markabians, yes. Um, so, uh, and an example of this is last week that we had a, a candidate forum for some of the folks running for city council. And, uh, in the group, as soon as I mentioned Scientology, I mean, in the audience, there were five Scientologists who came to immediately start screaming out religious bigot and, and just try to shut me down. And the room was not with them. There were a lot of people who were shouting, "Let him talk." But, I mean, that's the, that's the whole idea is to, is to be shouting out these thought-stopping phrases. Or don't listen to him. He's a religious bigot. Well, it's not about the religion at all. It's not about faith. It's about their behavior.
Yeah.
Uh, it, it's about the fact that they have been intimidating the people of Clearwater since they snuck into town in 1975 under a fake name.
Yeah.
And people are still afraid to go downtown.
So you had mentioned that you're.
Somebody is willing to say, "Yeah, I'm not afraid of you."
So you had mentioned that you're getting their mail. Have you seen a channel on YouTube called Skeptic She? This, this gal is all, she's also getting their mail and she like reads it out and shit like on her channel. She doesn't have a lot of subs or whatever, but we've watched her a couple of times and she's pretty cool and pretty funny. You might wanna check her out. We've played some videos of hers on stream before. You know, I've heard this stuff that they do about calling people, uh, religious bigots ever since like the drop. Like I remember like during Chenology, they were claiming that Anonymous was a, like some sort of, some sort of hate group, uh, against Scientology. And I, I remember that you, you know, you put yourself in a position where, well, when you got the name Wise Beard Man, where you sort of criticized Anonymous in a way, but it was very constructive, but you know, that could've gone either way, right? They could've, they, because it comes out, it came out of 4chan, so they could've either tried to eat you alive or gone with you and it's, it's pretty good that they went with you, cause then there, I think after that, the protests hit the street and they were funny.
Yeah. Yeah, they, they were terrific. And I gotta tell you, I, I felt the same way when I put that video up. I said this, I, I told myself, this may backfire. They just may come after me and say, "What do you know, uh, old fat guy instead of wise beard man?"
If your name, if they would've called you old fat guy instead of wise beard man, that would've sucked.
I'm sorry?
Oh, if they would've called you old fat guy instead of wise beard man, that would've sucked.
Yeah. But, uh, I, I was working at, uh, one of the TV stations down in San Diego at the time. And I saw this first video they put out, which was, you know, meant to be menacing with the, the Guy Fawkes mask and the clouds zipping by in the background and scary music and, and their message was, we're, you know, essentially Scientology, we're coming for you. We're, we're tired of, uh, all the things you've been doing to people and we're gonna, um, we're gonna strike back. And then I, I saw some of the things that had been talked about, uh, in, in the forums. Some things like, "Ooh, let's go to their parking lot and put, uh, sugar in their gas tanks" or something like that. And I just thought, "Oh, God." The only thing I knew about Anonymous at that time is there was one local Los Angeles Fox station. Wasn't Fox News, but it was a Fox affiliate, so that always has its own, uh, branding problem right there. But they did a story about Anonymous where they just called it a hate group and a dangerous group of criminals. And, uh, and so that was essentially the only thing that I knew about Scientology, uh, about Anonymous at that time. And I thought, "Well, this is a risk, but, um, you know, I gotta, I gotta say something about this to kind of, uh, temper this," because I knew that they were also, they, they were talking about how they were calling into the orgs, uh, and, um, you know, I'm sure the people who were at the, the desk there, those poor Sea Org people who worked 16 hours a day, uh, for 50 bucks a week if they're lucky. They're getting all these threatening calls and it's gotta be freaking them out. Cause it freaked me out just looking at the video. So I thought, "Okay, well, if you're gonna do this, you have to do this the right way." Uh, because they tar and feather anyone who comes after them. Um, so they're gonna, they're gonna call you criminals. They're gonna, they're also going to cast blame on those of us who have been speaking out against Scientology for decades and say that now we're all banding together with, uh, international terrorists to take down Scientology. And it just not, was not a smart move. And I, and not to be boring you to tears with all this stuff, but.
No, not at all.
But I would see, um, I, I would see them say things like, "Uh, if one of us goes down, there'll be 10 more to rise, uh, to take our place." And well, that's great for those of you who are still standing, but for those who are taken down, this is serious business. And in Scientology, it's going to do everything possible to identify you and get you thrown in jail. And, and ultimately they did manage to get some Anonymous, um, sent to jail for, denial of service attacks on Scientology's website. So while it may be fun to take down their websites for a day or two, it landed one guy in jail for a year. And, you know, that's not easy on, on those folks who really have, have the brunt of Scientology's attacks.
And, uh, for those who care about that.
Instead of attacking me, they listen.
And that person has loved ones too, who are worried about them while they're in jail and stuff too. It's not, when somebody goes to jail, like, uh, there's kind of a saying that like, kinda the whole family goes to jail, you know? Or the whole network goes to jail because they're stressed, they're worried, they're concerned. And the other thing, you know, you had mentioned that, um, that if they're able to paint, you know, they're gonna paint, uh, their dissenters as terrorists or bigots or whatever, anyway, maybe don't prove them right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, like, what, like, we do a stream on, uh, Fridays where we, there's this conspiracy theorist we make fun of, right? And he goes live at the same time we do, so we'll pull up his livestream. But I always tell everybody, I'm like, you know, "It's cool if you wanna go into his chat." I'm like, "But be funny." Like, if you're gonna go into their chat, like, be funny and be kind. Don't, don't just go in there and be abusive because you were not, you know, we're anti-conspiracy theorists around here. And if they're from our community, and in your case, Anonymous, whether you liked it or not, was gonna be painted as your community. So if they're coming from our community, they better be funny.
They better be funny and, yeah.
And Anonymous was definitely funny. And, and I gotta say, as I met them, as they started doing these amazing protests every month, uh, they were very creative. And it, this was not a dangerous group of individuals. This was, uh, people from all walks of life. I met police officers, attorneys, nurses, uh, uh, kids, uh, just, just good people who were out there for the right reasons, because what Scientology was doing was wrong.
Yeah.
So, uh, I, I think they proved that, um, that they, they actually came to understand exactly what Scientology was and why it was, um, right to peacefully protest. And I, I still remember events they would do. They would always have a theme around their monthly protest. And one, one month it was to attack Scientology Sea Org, which started when Hubbard took Scientology out to sea after having been kicked out of, uh, England back in 63.
Because everybody's welcome in international waters.
Yeah. They had a pirate-themed Sea Arg protest, which was very clever. They, they were all wearing pirate costumes and they had, uh, chanties to sing and, and, uh, it was great. Uh, while making a serious point.
Yeah, that's, you know, it's kinda, it's like the, it's like the old saying, you get, you get more flies with honey than with flypaper, right? Like, so if people walking by are like, "Why are these people dressed by pirate, like pirates?" And then that might give you an opportunity to talk to somebody walking by who doesn't know what you're doing, whereas, you know, if you're pro, if, well, first of all, I think that, I think that when you told them to be funny, or I don't, I don't remember exactly, like, I've watched, I've watched the video, you know, if, if you're, 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 uh, you know, you're basically your message to Anonymous after their message to Scientology. I think that might've been a catalyst to get everybody away from their computer and out in the street. Cause you can't be that funny while you're DDoSing a website, right?
Yeah. I think it may have been the first time they took to the streets. And I tell you, for those of us who had been protesting through the years, um, there would be maybe an, uh, an annual protest in Clearwater. Uh, the first one I went to was 99 in LA, um, where people flew in from around the world, uh, for L Ron Hubbard's birthday to protest out in front of the Celebrity Center in Big Blue and all these big locations in LA. We would max out at like 50 people at the most. And then when Anonymous took to the streets in, in LA, I, I, there was, I, I don't remember how many thousand people, thousands showed up there, but there were cities that had 5,000 protesters, 10,000. Uh, and then tiny, uh, smaller cities that had, uh, still a good, good group of people who suddenly came out to protest. And that was actually stunning to see. And they spent a lot of time after that producing great videos, educating people as they educated themselves more about why you should be, you know, what, what there is about Scientology to be concerned about. So it was, it was amazing time. And having to do it every month, you know, the, the fun starts falling away after that. So it lasted a big, big year or so, but, um, but what they, what impact they had was pretty profound. And it gave a lot of other people who had been in Scientology, uh, the freedom to feel comfortable coming out and telling their stories. And, uh, they started recording like, uh, members' stories from the pickets and sharing those. And that sense that there are people who have your back, who understand what you're talking about and wanna help. I mean, that's, that's so important.
Right. One of the main deterrents to having to, for leaving the church is the fact that you're going to get harassed your pants off every minute and you don't know which direction it's gonna come from. Are they gonna go and start talking to my boss? Are they gonna start calling the cops and saying that, uh, you know, "I abuse my kids"? Are they gonna start doing this? They're gonna start doing that? Having a, a community like that behind you probably just like gave people so much hope and like, "Hey, come F with me." And I got this whole, I got a whole Guy Fawkes army behind me that's, uh, sitting at the computers waiting to take down your little network or whatever it is, you know?
Yeah, it, it was, it was very powerful and, and very important at the time. So I'm, I'm so glad that they, they, you know, took action and did it the right way. They, they made a huge difference. And there's been this evolution starting around that time. Around 2008 was a, uh, pretty big year in, in Scientology terms, because this was the year that Tom Cruise fired his publicist, uh, Pat Kingsley, who was one of the main publicists in Hollywood and, and hired his Scientologist sister to run his, his, uh, PR. And that was a disastrous year for Cruise. That was the year he jumped on Oprah's couch. That was the year he went on to Today Show and said, "Matt, Matt, you're glib."
You're glib, Matt. You're glib.
Yeah, you don't know anything about psychiatry. I do.
It's, um, you know, the, the Scientology thing crosses over for us in a lot of ways, like, somebody maybe watching our channel might think that things aren't connected, right? Cause we do a lot of stuff about cults and a lot of stuff about conspiracy theory. And we do, um, we do some politics too, but that, that market's saturated. But the way, like the parallels that we see, or that at least that I've been able to see covering Scientology and then watching a movement like the Chemtrails movement, I find that a lot of the things that are being said are kinda the same thing. Like what Tom Cruise said about, "Oh, you haven't studied psychiatry and I have." Well, if you talk to somebody who believes in Chemtrails, they're gonna be like, "Oh, well, you haven't done your own research and I have." And it's sort of the same, like, it's the same reaction in some ways to like incredulity or even like ridicule or disagreement. And it's, it's, it's these kind of, you know, I was talking to John Atak about this and we were talking about, uh, conspiracy movements as like kind of decentralized cults with many small leaders versus something like Scientology where there's like a, this kind of monolith with one leader. And it just, you know, I think that my experience, um, covering Scientology and, and, and getting interested in it kind of prepared me for some of the other stuff that I was gonna get into, just because I know how like groups that don't wanna be criticized behave. And I'm able to spot like some of the, some of the, the common, uh, rhetoric and some of the common tactics and some of the common deflections.
Yeah. Yeah, I listened to that interview. You did a great job.
Oh, which one?
It's one of the reasons why I gladly accepted your invitation.
Me and John?
Yeah.
Oh, I, John Atak, by the way, uh, John, what John Atak does, like informs what we do around here in a very profound way. It isn't just about Scientology and cults. It's being able to like reference the things that they're talking about over there at Open Minds Foundation and trying to draw the parallels. And then there's some intellectual firepower behind what we're doing because of the hard work they're doing over there. It is, I know that they're talking about cults and control groups, but it also works with things that I think are cult-like, like white nationalist movements, especially like in the last few years. You know, definite, men's rights activist movements often operate that way too. And it just so happened that by making, uh, online friends with Karen De La Carrier, I met, I met, uh, John Atak. And, uh, before we even move on here, I just wanna thank Karen for all of her love and support over the years, cause we're like horrible trolls in some ways. And she's like a really nice lady and like she didn't have to be like so giving with her time and giving with her network. But like, when I first spoke to Karen, we had such a great conversation that she just started referring me to people and, you know, I know that I'm talking to you right now and I do thank you for being here, but Karen has done so much to help us in their, like, I feel like we get some credibility in the anti-Cientology movement just from Karen talking about us in like kind of glowing terms and calling our show every once in a while just to say hi, you know? Um, you've met Karen, right?
Absolutely. Yeah, I, I've interviewed her several times and, uh, she's, what she's gone through is, is just unbearably tragic. The first time I met her and we did, I, I think we sat down and did like three video interviews together. And the first time, uh, she had, had left the organization, but still believed in L Ron Hubbard. And, uh, she was, uh, I, I believe still doing independent auditing for people. And at that point, she talked about her son, uh, Alexander.
Oh, that was so hard to listen, like when I interviewed her to have her tell that story. Like, and I was new to like podcasting and media. It must've been within six months of the time we started that I was able to get Karen on the show. And it was, I had never heard her tell that story and it was like, it was like, I think I would maybe, maybe perform a little better now listening to that story, but it kinda, it kinda tripped me up as, as far as the, uh, the ability to conduct an interview, because like listening to somebody's story and listening to like her voice, like kinda stutter and kinda shudder as she was telling the story. It was like a lot for me as like a new, as like a new broadcaster or whatever. Uh, you know, I still think I did a good job on the interview, but that, I was, I was like lost for words and like I, I, like, like I'm not really an empathetic person most of the time and media wench can attest to this.
Empathy gaps.
But I, it just, it, I, I like, but I felt, or at least to some degree, I feel like I felt what she was feeling and it was like overwhelming in a way, you know?
Yeah, uh, you know, the, when we, when we first sat down to talk, she was talking about her son and how he would never disconnect from her. Uh, they had a great bond and they loved each other and, and she wasn't worried about that. And then the, we, we got together again because he did disconnect from her. And she had a whole different view set by that point on Scientology and on Hubbard. And then the third time we, we talked is at the memorial she had for her son. Uh, for those who, who aren't aware of this, uh, Karen found out that her young son, he was in his twenties, um, died a few weeks earlier, found out about it on Facebook. Uh, she wasn't allowed to, to see her son, uh, at the morgue. She wasn't allowed to attend his funeral. And it just, it boggles the mind that, that our organization can be that vicious, that vindictive. So she held her own memorial for her son, uh, out at sea. And I went and videotaped that, but, you know, it's just shocking how Scientology can indoctrinate you so much that what's important is the organization, not your family, not your friends, not anything else. You have to keep Scientology working.
KSW.
KSW.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah, but if, um, as much as they tout trying to bring all of the nationalities of the world together and bring, you know, humanitarian this and drug-free that and all this, how absolutely like garbage they treat their parishioners, I guess. I mean, it, you can't, yeah, exactly. You can't be with, uh, SP members of your family. You have to disconnect. You can't, uh, you can't, I don't know. I, I just, I don't understand. Well, I guess I do understand now that I've watched it so much and seen so many different aspects of it, how they, it's like from the very beginning, they brainwash you from the very, very beginning. They love-bomb you and they brainwash you. And then from then on, it's like, yeah, it's all Scientology from then on.
Yeah, I, I think L Ron Hubbard, uh, was a genius. He was an evil genius that developed this mind control factory that was very clever in the way they suck you in. Uh, Tori talks about you getting on a train and may have a hard time getting off. Every, uh, you know, essentially every abuse that Hubbard built into the organization is to prevent people from leaving the group. And prevent people from taking their wallets with them.
Especially.
So you gotta stop talking to SPs because they may influence you and you might decide to leave. So it doesn't matter if, uh, husband, wife, children, doesn't matter. Stop talking to them or you're gonna lose your bridge.
Yeah.
And they, they, they actually do have people convinced, "This is my eternity that's at stake." So yeah, alright, so you're not gonna see your kids? You'll have millions of other kids in future lifetimes.
Yeah, I mean, there's a, there's a billion years to, you know.
Yeah, there's one, one dentist, uh, two married dentists in Chicago I interviewed back in 2000. Uh, they had been defrauded out of $20,000. They'd been trying for two years to get back for courses they paid in advance, uh, and never used.
Yeah.
When they got involved, it was through the Hubbard Management Tech, where, um, these, these shysters will go around, uh, training people on how to run a business. And they really target dentists and chiropractors, because doctors in medical school do get some business background, uh, some courses on how to run a, an office, but, uh, dentists don't. So here's a prime target with lots of money coming in. Uh, and they, they invite you to a free seminar, suck you into their expensive management courses. And then, once you're sucked into that, they say, "You ought to come down and, and fix up other parts of your life too, down at the Scientology org." And the, the wife, when the husband attended this meeting, uh, about the business side, she, uh, you know, she was worried about it. And when he talked then about, "Well, let's go down to Scientology," he said, "No way. They're a cult. I don't want them to do that." But she's the one who then did get sucked in. And when he had doubts, she, she didn't wanna leave. And their, her Scientology auditor or people at the org were saying, "Ah, you've had millions of husbands before. You're gonna have millions more. Dump them. Just dump."
That's such a weird thing. The other thing I think.
Right?
The other thing that I think that is weird about this is that like a dentist is a scientist, right? And so it goes to kinda like, one of the things that I've learned from the Open Minds Foundation is, you know, just cause somebody's educated in the sciences doesn't mean that they're like gonna always be skeptical and that they're always gonna be able to kinda determine what is and isn't bullshit, like.
Like Ben Carson.
Well, nobody, that's, that's completely different, right? But nobody like thinks to themselves, "Well, you know, uh, here's my New Year's resolution. I'm gonna join a fucking cult."
Right.
Unless you're reckless.
Right. Well, Scientology is very clever at finding your ruin, as they call it. You know, they, they find out what you need help with, whether it's through a personality test, if they meet you on the street, or, um, whether it's through something like the Hubbard Management Tech. Uh, they find out what's, uh, what's troubling you and say, "We can help you with that." So you got a cheap course to begin with. They suck in there. You're surrounded by people love-bombing you, as you said. And, um, and you're, you're put on that train, um, and it's hard to get off.
Yeah. Next thing you know, you're sucking down B12 and stuck in a sauna for four hours.
Four hours if you're lucky. Well, no, the purif, by the way, the purif is like, you know, um, again, like, this is like one of the things I try not to do on stream. This is a bit of a personal story, but a, a very good friend of mine, but a, a very good friend of mine, um, she had left the cult, and she had left her husband, too, uh, probably not particularly related, but they were still friends. Like, I'd see them out on the avenue together, like, we went to, we'd always be at the same restaurant hanging out. And her husband was a nice enough guy, I didn't really broach the Scientology stuff, because like, you don't do that really in, in social situations, right? Because it would have made my friend uncomfortable. Uh, but then, um, one time I was walking by one of the bars we all hung out at, and I could see that she was distressed, and I was on my way home, and then I went into the bar to find out what happened. And, uh, her husband had passed away, and before he had passed away, he had been through the purif, and in, in the course of the purif, they had told him, I'm sorry, everybody who's listening, the purification rundown, it's a, some bullshit about how you can sweat out toxins, which is not how your body works, um, at all, like, you have a liver for that, and, uh, mine is overworked in a lot of cases. But, but they had, uh, I guess they had talked him into stopping taking his heart medication during the purif, and then, um, he had a heart attack, and, and he died. And, uh, you know, she's, she's afraid to go after them, like, for wrongful death, because she got out of the cult somehow without them harassing her, right? She's a smart, she's crafty. She probably used, you know, she's, some people are able to get out of the cult without being harassed by whatever means. She may have told them that she was a Buddhist, I don't know, you know, exactly what it was, but she got out. And, you know, she can't now, and they weren't married anymore, or they were in the process of a divorce, but they were, they obviously cared a great deal about each other, and it was, it was like, like, after I had almost forgotten about my friend that the cult took away from all of us, and then this happened, and it was like, you know, I wasn't super close with her husband, but this is a good friend of mine, and she was, I mean, she is such a, like, you know those people you meet who you're like, "Ain't nothing gonna crack this person?" Well, her ex-husband dying, I was wrong. She was wrecked. Like, we all bought her drinks and stuff, probably not the best way, best way to deal with it, but that was, but that was how we all socialized, right? We all went out drinking. And it was just, it was such a bizarre thing, like, to, again, like, instead of it being my pain of losing my best friend, like, people are like, "Oh, that's just your friend," or whatever, no, your friends are your family, but like, watching a more extreme version of the pain that I suffered, like, I was, I like, I'm, like, Media Wench was saying, "I have an empathy gap," but I was sitting there at this bar, fucking crying with my friend, right? And like, this isn't why you go out on a Friday night, and, and-
No Friday cry day.
No, no Friday cry day, but it, it was just yet another example of, of, of how, you know, in this case, they legitimately took this person off the planet by convincing this person that he could, that he, to purify himself, he needed to stop taking his heart medication. I can't prove this, right? And I think she would have a rough time proving it in a court, but I couldn't imagine ever advising someone to stop taking their fucking heart medication, right? Like, um, do you, I know that, most of the people I've spoken to in the context of Scientology from Karen De La Carrier all the way to Andy Nolch, or, I don't know if you know about Andy Nolch, but, but don't worry about it, you're, you're better off. But they've been, they've been ex, ex-scientologists, in the case of you, and the other person I want to get on the horn pretty soon is Tony Ortega, who I believe also wasn't a Scientologist.
Right.
Um, but most of the other people I've spoken to are, are ex-scientologists, and like, being on the outside looking in and watching this, watching the pain that's being caused, like, it's, it's like hard to fathom and hard to understand, hard to understand how people get, get caught up in this, right? Because we all think it couldn't have ever been us, but it could have been any of us.
This is why we don't watch any of the videos from the people who've left Scientology. We, or very, very few of them who are like, actually telling their story, because they're so, they're so, they're just so fucking sad. They're so sad, and it's like, I don't understand how anybody who, anything that calls itself a religion that's trying all these humanitarian efforts, who's trying to like, spread this message that they're good people, just ruin the people who support them. And it can't be anything but a grift at that point. It can't be anything but a grift and a money grab. A money and a power grab.
Well, uh, let me say this, because it, uh, you know, I went on my own little journey from the outside of Scientology, uh, learning about this and understanding this, and a lot of, um, uh, what I discovered along the way came from becoming friends with folks who had been in the group. Like, I, I started online about 98, working under a fake name, called myself, uh, Ben Wog.
I'm really glad, by the way, you didn't care that I was using a fake name when I, uh, reached out to you, by the way.
Uh, I, I'm used to that. Uh, so, I guess I was scared to death. I read John's book, I read, uh, Russell Miller's book, um, there, there were just a handful of, of critical books about Scientology at the time. And, and what I was reading, like, the attacks on Paulette Cooper, uh-
Oh, that story.
Yeah, just stunning. And what they did here in Clearwater, Florida, I knew about it from 60 Minutes from 1980, but I didn't really have many, uh, many details about it until I started looking into it around 98, when I was in LA. And I was just horrified by what they did to Mayor Gabe Casaris, who was-
We watched Gabe on stream, yeah.
-the mayor here in Clearwater, when, when Scientology snuck into town, under a fake name. So I, I could see how they attacked and silenced people, and I was afraid to, to show my face. And, uh, so I started out as Ben Wog, and then I decided along the way, "Well, I'm gonna give myself a doctorate, like Hubbard," so I became Dr. Benjamin Wog. And-
Good on you.
When I met some people who, uh, had been members at one of the protests, I showed up with my big, uh, video camera, just to film a protest, and Dennis Erlich, who, um, had his home raided by Scientology because of responses he made on, on the news group Alt Religion Scientology, just verifying that, yeah, some of this upper-level material, uh, is true. So if someone had posted OT3, he'd say, "Yeah, yeah, that's true," and, and talk about it a little bit. He didn't post it himself, he, he just commented on it. Uh, he, uh, three people, including him, their homes were raided in conjunction with this website FactNet, which was an early, uh, storehouse of information about Scientology. And he lived just like ten blocks away from me in Glendale, California, when that happened, and I'd read about it. And so here I am, uh, taking some video of him talking to a passerby on the street, and he's explaining what Scientologists do, and he said, "Like, this guy, this guy's one of them with his camera." I said, "No, no, no, I'm Dr. Benjamin Wog." So we met there, and then he invited me to, uh, come to meet, um, oh, oh, heavens, I've forgotten her name now, momentarily, it's, it's skipped my mind, but she used to work with the Cult Awareness Network, which Scientology, um, attacked and then-
And then bought.
-purchased and took over, right? Priscilla Coats, that's her name. So she lived in Glendale as well. And every Sunday afternoon, she would have a little support group for folks who had been members, not just of Scientology, but several different cults. And Dennis invited me, uh, over to one of those meetings, and I started to meet more and more people who have been affected by, by all of this. And when you, when you first look into Scientology, it's the bizarre things that catch your attention. You know, Xenu? You believe that, that, uh, an evil overlord, Xenu, stuffed you into a volcano and blew you up with hydrogen bombs far more powerful than those we have today? You believe this? You gotta be nuts! But when you, when you learn more, you realize, the people who are in Scientology don't even know that's coming for them.
Right, most people don't ever hear that story.
Right. Um, in fact, I, I, it's very rare that I get a chance to talk to somebody who's still in. There've been a couple of times, like, uh, but, uh, I was on a, a radio show in Texas once, and I was the guest on the show, and the Scientologist PR, uh, lady from, from Clearwater here, Pat Harney called in, uh, and she was complaining about me being on the air, so she was invited back the next day to, uh, be a guest herself on that show. And because she called in during my appearance, the talk show host said, "Mark, feel free to call in on her appearance."
Fair enough.
So she wasn't expecting that, and I, I called in-
Good radio host.
Yeah.
Sounds like us.
I enjoyed my appearances with him, but, um, she had said the first day that, um, it, it, because I had explained Xenu, she said, "I've been in for years. I've never read anything like that." So I could point out, "Well, this is an acceptable truth." Uh, it's, she, uh, it, it turned out, the next day, she said, uh, she hadn't even reached the state of clear yet. Well, no, you haven't read any of that stuff.
Yeah.
You have to get up to OT3 before you find out, your real problem is that you were blown up on a volcano and you're covered with body thins. That's one of the troubling aspects about religion, is the bait-and-switch aspect of it.
Right, and then, that, that comes in when they relieve you of that burdensome $300,000 that it takes-
Yeah.
-to get to OT3 in the first place.
Yeah.
Once that burden is relieved from you, then they'll let you know the whole story.
Yeah, so I was able to call back in and say, "Well, what she's told you is an acceptable truth. She hasn't read any of that stuff, because she's not allowed to read any of that." And she was so upset about being on the air with somebody who understood Scientology and could counter, uh, the, the crap that they spew, uh, that it's very rare that they'll, they'll, uh, ever talk to anyone who knows anything about Scientology.
Yeah, no press, they're not down with the press whatsoever.
Right.
Only in very controlled environments. We watched, um, twice, once I watched on this stream, uh, the David Miscavige interview, the only one, you, you know which one I'm talking about. But then we do a show called The Intellectual Dollar Tree, where we make fun of it, I'm not sure if you're familiar with something called The Intellectual Dark Web, um, but we, I, I used, I used that from fuck, like, the eighties, to like, compare and contrast with some of the, what we see as like, cult-like adherents to what I think are like, overrated public intellectuals, and we use kinda David Miscavige to kinda compare and contrast. And, um, you know, I, I feel like, uh, in that case, Ted Koppel did a pretty good job, and David Miscavige ain't never going on fucking TV anymore. And, uh-
Never.
So if it's okay with you, I kinda wanna, well, before, before we switch gears, I, I wanna mention something real quick, that the, the rich people in Scientology see a completely different picture than the people who are volunteering their time supposedly to get up the bridge, right? If you can go in and pay your way up the bridge, you have a different experience, you don't ever get shipped off to Clearwater, you're never in the Sea Org, you know, scrubbing the floor with a toothbrush, as we say, um, you know, that's, that's maybe an exaggeration, but we also are like, "Oh, that person didn't," you know, if we see a Scientologist out and about, and somebody won't take their pamphlet, I'm like, "Oh, that person has to scrub the floor with a toothbrush when they get back." But like, the, the, the people, not just celebrities, but maybe, you know, a good example might be somebody like Karen, where, uh, her and her husband were very well-to-do, uh, their experience in Scientology, while when they left, they were, they were abused by the cult, their experience inside the cult would have been dramatically different than, you know, somebody like me, or somebody like the Media Wench if we were to join, right? We're like normal people, and we don't have the money to spend, so our day would be, you know, 14 hours of Scientology, maybe in addition to our day job, and we would have to give some of that money from our day job to the cult, even though we're volunteering all this time. So like, the, you know, the experience of the rich people who have a platform to come out and speak about it, while that's sad, the people we never hear about, the people who, who are volunteers for the, for the Church of Scientology, like, we don't often hear their stories, and their stories are way worse than the rich people who paid for all the courses and got scammed out of their money.
Lee Remini definitely covered a couple of those in her series.
Yeah, she, she was pretty good about, uh, uh, telling tales from Sea Org members, um, because those are some of the most tragic. There are three different types of Scientologists. There's the, the public Scientologists, who are like Tom Cruise, or, or, uh, any of the wealthy celebrities, or the dentists who I interviewed in, in Chicago, uh, anybody who has money to, to pay up for courses. Uh, their, their treatment's gonna be far different from the other, uh, other types. The, the, the second group would be staff members, who go home every day, they, they show up to work at, at a Scientology office. They're not paid well, generally, unless they're registrars, I guess you can make some good money as salespeople for Scientology. Uh, but, um, but again, you know, they get to go home at the end of the day. And then the third members are, are those dedicated people who joined the Sea Org, who are forced to live in horrible conditions and cramped apartments, uh, with, uh, you know, 10 or more people living in one apartment complex, or one apartment, rather. And they're the ones who are working 16 hours a day, um, six or even seven days a week sometimes, for 50 bucks a week. They're the ones who face some of the harshest things, like being sent to the Rehabilitation Project Force, or the RPF, as Scientology calls it, which is like a prison camp, where you can do something as simple as make a joke about Scientology and be overheard. And that can send you to the RPF for months or even years, until you get back into the good graces of Scientology. I know a lot of your listeners probably know all about this already, but-
Well, no, that's why we are, that's why we're having you on. I think like, when we cover Scientology, we do a good job of making fun of it, but we don't do that great a job of, no, we don't do a great job of explaining it. That's why like, I take the time to, you know, uh, previously John Atack, uh, but also, you know, you, I'd like to get Tony Ortega on here, because, you know, this stuff is funny, and like, the Scientology channel that we watch sometimes on stream is ridiculous, but that's like, not really the point. Do you know what I'm saying? The point is, the point is that this is an abusive situation. Everything from Narcanon to American Scholastic, or is it Scholastic American, I forget which one it is, this is like a pipeline, where like, the top of the funnel is, in the case of, uh, Narcanon, the top of the funnel is, you know, somebody whose family is desperately looking for a way to help their, their loved one who is, you know, struggling with, uh, substance abuse, or like, American Scholastic, they just trick some school into like, putting their fucking weird curriculum into the school. But the bottom of the funnel is either they've, you know, in maybe the case of Narcanon, if, if it turns out your family has a bunch of money and they find that out, well, then they funnel you into like, mainline Scientology, once they have not helped you with your drug addiction problem, because they're certainly not a cognitive behavioral, uh, drug addiction pro, program like people really need. But then at the bottom of the funnel is like, all this abuse, and, you know, they're able to, they're kind of able to, through their, their different front organizations, they're able to put like a, like, like a, like a shellac, or like a, like a varnish on what they're doing and present it to you as, "We're here to help." But the bottom of that funnel is like, nowhere you really wanted to be, even, even the person who goes in, like, in crisis, like, they probably would have never joined a cult, but it's just like, it's, you know, that, you know, putting the frog in the, in the pot before the water's boiling, right? It's like, sort of the same idea here. Uh, but I wanted to switch gears and talk about something a little more like, hopeful, and that's your run for office, if that's okay. First, I wanted to ask a question, because I know this varies, um, from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. If I wanted to donate to your campaign out here in California, would that be lawful, legal, and something I would be allowed to do?
Yeah, if you live anywhere in the United States, uh, you can make a contribution to the campaign, and thanks for asking. You can go to markbunker.com.
Well, I plan on it now, that, I plan on it now, like, um, and I hope that some of our listeners or whatever will think about doing it.
That would be amazing, because we're in crunch time now, the election is March 17th, so we've got less than two months, and we still need money in order to send out mailers to get, get, uh, into the hands of all the registered voters, information about my campaign, because I'm knocking on doors, and I'm getting a lot of support, whoever I talk to. It is amazing, um, when I, when I say, and I've, I've been talking about Scientology for, I've been standing up to them for 20 years, that's all people need to know, they say, "Yes, you got my vote, yes, thank you," because no one will talk about it. So i- if we can get the message out, we've got a really great, uh, um, chance of winning. But that's, that takes money. So, uh, go to markbunker.com, you can make a donation there just by clicking the, uh, donate button. It'd be a huge help. Of course, any, any money from overseas is not, is not legal for us to accept, so, uh, you can only donate, uh, from, from the US, but please, that would help so much. And we're just about to launch some, uh, t-shirts and, and other things like that that you can purchase for the campaign as well, that will go toward, uh, getting our message out. Uh, getting our message out. Um. Anyway, I I wanted to make one other point about. The Scientologists themselves before we talk a little bit more about the campaign.
By all means.
But uh, when I talk about Scientology, I'm not talking about the individual members. Who by and large are 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 smart, dedicated, good people. Who really do believe they're they're trying to save the planet, they're an idealistic lot. Um, it's the organization, it was the. The um, harassment and and other abuses built into the organization by Hubbard. And carried forward now by by David Miscavige, that's the problem. Um, so I learned very early. That. I I don't see myself as an enemy of the Scientologists. I feel that I've been fighting on their behalf and even though they don't believe it. Even though they're taught that anyone who criticizes Scientology is a criminal. Uh, and that's why they can come up to me on the street or or any critic and say, what are your crimes, Mark?
Oh, what are your crimes?
What are your crimes?
What are your crimes? I remember that, that was one of the, that was one of the first things I noticed about the videos, like when there would be protests and there would be interactions between uh. Either members or representatives of the cult, they would just immediately start saying, hey, what are your crimes, what are your crimes? But I mean, if somebody, if somebody had a criminal record, they could still go out and criticize Scientology, it doesn't make Scientology good because somebody has a criminal record.
Right, right, and they also, Hubbard also said, uh, dig up their crimes and if you can't find them, manufacture them. So they try, and that's one of the reasons I spoke out to anonymous, because they're going to try. To get them arrested and try to give them a criminal background. And you have to be aware of that. Um, but at any rate, the the Scientologists that I meet. I'm sure are good people. Because I've met so many former Scientologists, I can't think otherwise. And in 2000 and 2001, I lived here in Clearwater for the first time. Working for a group called the Lisa McPherson Trust. Which was a small ragtag, ragtag team of individuals trying to help people abused or defrauded by Scientology. And at that point, Mike Rinder. Co-host of Leah Remini's Scientology in the Aftermath. He was the the head of the Office of Special Affairs, the Dirty Tricks Department. He was personally coming after us. With all of these covert actions and all of these, they ran a global assault on Bob Minton, who. Who was the the man who funded the the LMT. And he he helped so many people in the years that that he was fighting Scientology. But they set out to destroy him. So I I remember shooting some video and editing it together. Uh, of some of these encounters. And I'd see Mike Rinder and Stacy Brooks was. Uh, a longtime member of Scientology who became the president of the LMT. Um, and she did a great job in helping shape my understanding of the organization. Because I remember, you know, looking at video of Mike Rinder and saying, that guy has got to be evil. And she said, no, Mark, actually, I know him, he's a really nice guy. And you go, what? What, how could you, how can you do these horrible things like such as were done by, done uh, to destroy Paulette Cooper or Gabe Casares? And and be a good person? Well, that's where indoctrination comes in. And this is where they shape your mind to such a degree that what's important is to keep Scientology working. They're an enemy, you've got to stop them, so whatever you do to stop an enemy of Scientology.
By any means necessary.
Yeah, L Ron Hubbard says, perfect, that's what you need to do. And that's the mindset you find yourself in. And you you find yourself doing things that. You never would have done otherwise and getting to know Mike after he left Scientology. Uh, just reinforce that even more. Because here's a, a good, smart guy who's who's atoning for a a a lot of the stuff. That uh, he had a hand in while he was in the group. Um. So when when I, when I'm speaking out, even on the campaign trail. I I try to make a point that uh, the Scientologists aren't the problem, it's the management is the abuses built into the group.
Yeah.
Um, because there there is a fear, a very. Real fear of Scientology by a lot of the citizens here in Clearwater, they don't want to go downtown. Because of Scientology's presence here. And we try to explain to them. It's okay, like Aaron Smith Levin, who is the head of the Aftermath Foundation, helping people now. Who are leaving Scientology, he and I have been going to restaurants downtown for months now and and.
Oh, your videos are cute, by the way, the videos you guys make are adorable, I like those.
Yeah, we.
Is it SPs on the town or whatever you call it?
Stories. What's that?
Uh, it's like SPs on the town or whatever you call it, I forget what it, I forget what the names of the videos are.
Dining with the SPs.
Yeah, yeah, those are cute, those videos are cute.
Yeah, so the the whole point was, well, let's let's show people that there are great restaurants downtown, let's talk about. The serious issues of of Scientology's involvement here downtown. And don't be afraid, we're not afraid, we're we're here, we're we're here in downtown, they're not destroying our uh, us. You know, you're safe. Take back the downtown, i- in essence, the one thing that Scientology doesn't want. Is meddling locals who might somehow see something they shouldn't see. So they like it quiet down there, they like the fact that they scared everybody off. Um, and it doesn't need to be that way.
Sucks for the rest of the city.
Scientologists, we don't have to be in their face. Uh, you know, it's not about coming down to protest, it's to say, listen. We understand what you do. We're not blaming it on you individual Scientologists. Um, and this is our downtown, we we want to make it thrive. Um, but. Until somebody stands up and says, I'm not afraid. To give a backbone to the city to say. All right, well, maybe we should renegotiate with Scientology in a different manner. Maybe we should stop attending their events as politicians. And having our pictures taken so that they can be put in Scientology's magazine and used as PR. To show how much everybody around the world and especially here in Clearwater loves Scientology. And that's, that's what the Scientologists do, all of these. Uh, self, not self-help, but uh, all of these. Uh, front groups like the Way to Happiness and and Applied Scholastics and all of these different things. They're all feeder groups into Scientology and there was a. Uh, a really great graphic in a Scientology magazine back in the late 90s, I think it was. Where they show uh, Narcanon, the Criminon, all these different, you know. Good deed groups. Showing the most important thing is the number of people being fed in each week into Scientology. That's what Scientology cares about. Um, they don't care that there's some dangerous. Very unhealthy aspects to Narcanon, L Ron Hubbard said. That this is how you handle drugs, so that's the way we're going to do it. Um, at any rate, uh, you know, I'm probably way off uh. Way off track here now, but.
Now we good.
But again, I I'm not an enemy of Scientology, I'm an enemy of lies. Uh, I don't believe you should be. Um. Yeah, lying every time you open your mouth, you should be honest about what you're doing.
Children shouldn't be able to sign billion year contracts.
Right, right.
I'd like to see them try to enforce that contract anyway, right? Because like a billion years, it's absurd, like contract law like. Makes that unenforceable, but it doesn't matter to the people in the cult, they think it's real.
Yeah, and and they are also trained as Scientologists that you never go to outside sources for help. You don't turn to the police. You don't turn to the court system. Anything, any problem you have with Scientology, you turn to the Internal Justice Chief. And you sign documents about that when you you join. So they expect you to go into arbitration with. The very people who are trying to bilk you of every cent they can.
Yeah.
So when these people leave Scientology. Um, they, who are Sea Org members, they'll get what's called a freeloader debt. Which is not enforceable in court, but Scientologists don't think about court. They they leave after having worked as slaves for Scientology for months or years. And they can find themselves hit with uh, bills for tens of thousands of dollars for back rent. Uh, and food and courses that they took.
Yep.
Um.
I was just talking about this today.
Think, I gotta pay this, if I don't, I'll be declared a suppressive person and I'll lose my family and friends. Um, so it's 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 really insidious.
It's like a religious mafia almost.
Yeah, exactly. Um, if the mafia was smart, they'd come up with some religious. Thing that they could put on top of their actions and say, you know, our guns, they're religious artifacts.
Yeah.
Right, our faith says to break your thumbs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Who isn't gambling only on Sundays?
Scientology does, uh, they they have this cloak of religion that they shield themselves with. And and i- in. When it comes to Clearwater, there's such a huge presence here, they've had such. An economic impact on the city. They have sucked the life and the money out of downtown since they moved in here. Every attempt that the city has tried to redevelop Scientology. Uh, re- to redevelop downtown, rather, uh, has failed. Whether it's back in 2000, they were um, going to. Give the entire downtown to an out of town developer for a dollar a year for 99 years. And at that point, the the then St. Petersburg Times. Ran a story with a poll. That showed that voters, people here had to vote on on whether they wanted to do this. Uh, and the voter show, uh, the poll said that 66% of the people thought. It's only going to benefit Scientology if it's re- redeveloped. And 100% of the people who responded to the poll said, even if the downtown was redeveloped. They still wouldn't come downtown because of Scientology. And I thought, well, there's something troubling for the developer who's about to. Uh, you know, put his money into this project. So I brought it up at a public meeting right before the vote. And somebody from the city. Uh, actually grabbed the microphone from my hand before I had a chance to ask that question. Um, and and I. Because I know, so I I I work downtown here with Bob Minton at the Lisa McPherson Trust. He grabbed it from me and walked away and said, this is not a time for religious bigotry. And the the rest of the audience are going, what the hell's going on? So I just decided to stand up there toward the front. Uh, to let them know, you know, I'm ready with my question now. It took him about 15 minutes before he came back to me, but I asked that question and the developer said. Um, you know. I don't think it's going to be a problem because once everybody's down here. Uh, the Scientologists are going to blend in and. Uh, I don't think you understand. Uh, no one wants to be down there to blend. Um. And that's still the case, I still meet people all the time who say, I don't want to come downtown. I have a, one of the competitors for seat two on the city council, one of her employees. Tracked me down a month or so ago at uh, well, it's not hard to find me, I was at a pizza place downtown.
You were the only person there.
Hey, you know, if you want to check that out, it's uh, it's on Dining with the SPs on my YouTube channel, youtube.com/markbunker. Anyway, um, so one of my opponents, um, employees. Tracked me down and very angrily asked, why do you keep talking about Scientology? And I said to her, well, why do you think people aren't coming downtown? And she went, Scientology? I said, yeah, that's why I talk about it. Not talking about it is not going to solve the problem, it hasn't all these decades. We've got to reset how the city deals with this problem. And the first thing we need to do is have somebody who understands Scientology and is not afraid of them as a baseline.
Yeah.
Like, i- i- back in. Back in decades past, when Scientology has snuck into town, I got to know um. Gabe Casares, who was the mayor of the city, he never shut up about Scientology until his dying day. Uh, and Lieutenant Ray Emmons was the the police officer in charge of investigating Scientology of for decades. And he explained that the police department used to have a training program for new recruits. To explain how Scientology behaves, what types of things to look out for. They stopped that back in the mid 90s. I think we should start that up again. I think it's important for the police department to understand that there is. An organization dominating our downtown who has written policies to say. Don't report any crimes to the police. Oh my God, you can't do that or you'll be declared a suppressive person and booted out because they don't want the PR flap, that's all. That's why there was a lawsuit that was in the paper on the day I filed to run for office. About this young girl who was, I I think it was 11, maybe 13. Um, at a Scientologist school here in Clearwater. Who had been sexually abused repeatedly at the the school. Um, and reported it to Scientology's auditors. And they blamed it on her and covered it up. Um. And it is just. Astonishing to me. That they get away with this crap. Um, but. It's important that we understand things like that. And that lawsuit is is um, being done now, it's a civil suit. That Leah Remini's um. Collected a a great set of attorneys to work on issues like this. And they're they're doing civil suits against Scientology and the leader David Miscavige. In order to. Get people deposed and to get. Uh, documents turned over as evidence that can then go to state and federal government. To have charges against them. Uh, so important, and I say we need to be working with. Uh, with folks like that to to get people who have been victimized to the right people. Uh, try to make a difference, try to go after their tax exempt status.
Yeah.
Because they don't deserve it.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, if the reason that they get away with all the shit they get away with is because of their religious exemption. And their tax exempt status, so if that is removed. Then that lifts that veil of protection that they have over them for all of the abuse and all of the fucking money taken and all the land grabbing and everything else that they're doing.
Well, yeah, and and we're not going to be able to to strip their religious status, but we can strip their. Their tax exemption, which is a huge cover.
Yeah.
Um, it's hard to say that they're not a religion because they do. Uh, they do have the trappings that they put together, so they can say, well, we truly believe that uh. Um, our thetans are immortal beings and, well, okay, sure, you can believe that. Um, but. Uh, they don't deserve to be tax exempt, they should be paying for um, for all those courses. See, they have a, a specific exemption for Scientology that no other religion has. There was a Jewish family 10 years or more ago who sued. Because they wanted to deduct their child's Jewish education. Uh, from their taxes, the way Scientologists can deduct, deduct all their auditing. So every penny that Scientologists pay in for this pseudo therapy, when you're on the E meter and talking about your painful past. That's all tax deductible and it shouldn't be. It really shouldn't be. That's a, um. If we, if we strip them of the tax exempt status, which they didn't have fully until 1993. They existed fine without it beforehand, they'll exist fine afterwards, you're not going to stamp out Scientology, there's always going to believe. In something, no matter how outrageous, whether it's the earth is flat. Or, you know, Nazis, there's always going to be some people who gravitate around an idea and say, that's for me.
Are there, are there Scientologists that currently sit on the city council?
No, there's, there's people who are. Um, afraid to speak out. There are people who um, are supportive. Like Dr. Bob Kundif, who's uh, running again for seat three, I'm running for seat two. Uh, he is very accommodating to Scientology. Um, they, the city has stood up a couple of times to Scientology recently and they paid a heavy price for it. Uh, they, once again, the city's trying to fix downtown without addressing the real problem. Uh, this time they're, they want to spend $64 million on a huge waterfront park to draw people downtown. $64 million is a lot of money to spend with no guarantee that it's going to work. It's beautiful. I mean, I've seen the designs. Uh, I, I, I think it's lovely, but is it going to be the smartest thing to do with our money? If people are still going to say, no, no, thanks. Not for me.
No, if you-
Essentially what we'll be doing.
When you're camp- Oh, sorry. Uh, when you're campaigning and you're out, I mean, I assume that you do a lot of door knocking and talking to the public and all, you know, and all that, you know, right up in your face campaigning, which is the best way to do it because you get, you get your finger on the pulse of the public. Um, you know, uh, yeah, if they're not going to go downtown to go to the pizza parlor to have dinner with an SP, then they're not going to go and hang out at a park, you know, doesn't matter how beautiful it is. They spend $64 million and try to get Scientology out of their town would be a much wiser investment.
Or, you know, try to help influence the way Scientology behaves. So if you say something critical about them, their PR people don't run over to your job and try to get you fired.
Yeah.
Which is one great PR move that Scientology uses.
Every single time, every time. And we've been watching um, like the, the deep cuts and the classic, the classic Scientology interviews. Um, like, uh, what was it? L. Ron Hubbard's son that was on, like a couple of, like a PB that, that those are some great, those are some great interviews, but, and, and ones that are beyond that, where every time they have somebody on one of these shows that want to speak out against Scientology, it's like, you could time it with, you could set your timer to it. They send the letter. They send, you know, they call the producer. They, you know, they, they, you know, all of these accusations and things, and it's, it's always the same thing. This guy is a creep around children. He steals your money. He'll, you know, he'll kick your cat down the stairs. Like every one of these like outrageous, outlandish claims, and it's over the years, it's been the same playbook every single time. And you would think that they would recognize a pattern in their own behavior and they're blowing up their own game. It's like, well, everybody kind of knows that, you know, this is, you guys are kind of a joke now. But they take themselves so seriously.
Yeah. Well, because, you know, the L. Ron Hubbard source is, is right. So if L. Ron Hubbard put it into policy that what you do is a noisy investigation, where you go knocking on the doors of neighbors and, and relatives and say, did you hear about the guy who lives next door, Bob, that, have you, have you seen any instances where he's got like little children hanging out at his house, trying to imply these things about you? Uh, and it's with the, the sole idea of making people around you doubt you. Um, like the, uh, uh, early on, once I showed my face at that first protest where I was filming uh, the L. Ron Hubbard birthday picket. Um, basically the next day, my, my neighborhood was leafleted with a very scary black and white picture of me saying, neighbors beware your, or beware your neighbor Mark Bunker. He's not who you think he is.
Do you have a, a scrapbook of all the Scientology propaganda that I've made about you? Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, you got a good camera or scanner?
About me, but this is something that they were doing to everyone at the time, especially the women who were criticizing Scientology. They were at their homes protesting them every day. Um, and luckily on this leaflet, they don't always do this, but they put at the bottom that this was from the Scientology parishioners league. So a- anytime somebody sees Scientology, it's always good for a laugh.
Yeah.
But, you know, you know, neighbor later told me, oh my God, do we have a channel molester in the neighborhood? And then it was all about, uh, he's not who you think he is. He spends his days on the internet attacking religious freedom.
Hanging out with anonymous and anti-fascists.
Yeah. And, and there was an, uh, uh, this was the house that the Scientologist used to live in. There was also a, a police officer who lived uh upstairs in the house. And I told him when these were set out that there's a chance. It's probably not going to happen, but there's a chance that somebody might come here to protest. And as I was telling him this, I looked out the window and there are two protesters were from Scientology with the big beware Mark Bunker signs. So I grabbed my camera, went out there and did an interview with them, didn't attack them. I said, let's talk and put that on the internet. So they never came back to my house again after that. And I think that's been um, why they've been actually pretty easy on me because I've always have had a camera on hand to show video for the first time of people doing a, a gangbang sex check with them all surrounding me saying, what are your crimes, Mark? What are your crimes? To people who aren't in Scientology, it's insanity.
Yeah.
The Scientologists, they go, eh, they applied the tech. That's, that's right. Hubbard says that they're criminals. They are criminals. So, ah, you know, it's a, a, again indoctrination. So I, I don't blame any of these people who do this because they're striking an effective blow against a, a criminal opponent in their minds. So I always hear L. Ron Hubbard when I have Scientologists attack me, even when they're standing up and shouting at me in a political forum.
We're going to play those clips later, by the way.
Are you? Okay. Even when that happens, I, I don't get angry with them and blame them. Yeah, that's, that's what Scientology wants them to do. And that's what they think is the right thing to do. Well, I think it's better for us to communicate and, and talk through the issues. So that's what I'm, I'm trying to do. And that's, uh, you know, as I'm, as I'm talking to people on the campaign trail, um, I, I've got a lot of support out there. Uh, with your donations, you can help me get out some TV ads and, and radio ads and mailers to everyone in the city as well. So that's, that's going to be a huge help. Remember markbunker.com.
So, um, before, before, before we get out of here, I wanted to ask about like, um, because I know that you can't run a campaign uh for city council uh specifically and only i- in opposition to the cult of Scientology.
Sure.
So while we have you here, because we care a great deal about local, uh, state, uh, city, um, you know, county politics or whatever. You know, outside of the cult of Scientology, what are the issues that you, you talk to people about? Maybe if they're, uh, you know, not aware of the cult or maybe don't care? Like where, what, what are your, what are the other things you're interested in? Because like, I feel like you'd be a good city council person based on what I've seen on your website. But maybe the people watching this don't know any of these other things about you. So what are, what are the other issues that you're, that you're concerned with in your community?
Sure. Well, uh, yeah, Clearwater, like every other city in the country, uh, has basic problems that need to be addressed, like affordable housing. Uh, I was shocked when I moved back here from San Diego, which is one of the most expensive cities in California. But I moved back here in 2013 thinking, well, it's going to be um more affordable to live here and I, and, and, and I enjoyed my years here and I want to see if I can make a difference. I'm stunned to see by uh, what a big issue it is here too. And while the rent may be uh cheaper here than in San Diego, Florida hits you with all sorts of other fines that you, uh, that, that kind of make up for that. Registering your car in LA, pretty cheap. Registering it here, pretty expensive. Just getting a license plate is a couple of hundred bucks. Uh, i- it's, it's insane how they do that. And red light cameras, evil, evil devices that are set up specifically, uh, and many times to, to target people who are least able to uh afford a ticket.
Ain't no red light cameras in Beverly Hills.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, so you, we have to address things like that. Sustainability is important. Uh, the weather's only getting worse here, um, as everywhere. The water's rising. We have to be prepared for all of that. Uh, hurricanes are getting stronger. Um, the, the, the sea water, when the, when the uh water level rises goes right into the water system here and, and causes havoc. Uh, so we, we, you know, all of these things are important. I, I think what's important to me is when I go to the city council meetings over the years and I've been um, watching people get up to bring a problem to the city, no one seems to care. Nobody, nobody's listening. Um, if you're a developer and you're putting up uh, a complex, oh yeah, we can approve you like that. We can smooth uh your, your ride here to get your project done. But you try to open a small business next to impossible. There's so much red tape. Uh, and that's where we need to concentrate because uh, these are, are things that really bring jobs to the area and bring life to an area, like whether it's downtown or whether it's in the, the, the North Greenwood community, um, predominantly African-American community, which is struggling because it's neglected. So we need to focus more on uh, the people in our neighborhoods and worry less about spending $64 million on a park downtown.
Yeah.
Oh, man, I hope you win, man.
Think of the homes we could paint with that money.
Mark, Mark, I hope you, I hope you win. You're talking my language right now. Like, this is all the stuff, you know, you mentioned rent. I don't know if you know where we're at. We're in Silicon Valley.
Oh my God. Yeah. I hear it from whistle.
I ain't never buying no house here, right?
Yeah, three of us, you know, three of us making almost 20 bucks an hour live in one house. And it's like, meh, sometimes towards the next paycheck, you know, you're, you're scraping around, scrounging around the, the cabinets looking for some food, you know? It's, it's
Yeah.
And it's, it's a thing all over the United States. It's also that, uh, that great income inequality gap that seems to be only becoming wider.
Well, more importantly, wealth inequality, right? Because like a lot of people who are rich, they live a life where they never had to work. You know, you mentioned, uh, you think about like a lot of the famous Scientologists. The first one that comes to mind for me, when my favorite Scientologist is Tommy Davis, right? But if I'm not mistaken, isn't his mom Ann Archer?
Yeah.
And so that guy is a guy who's never going to have to think about the issues that you were talking about with, uh, not, you know, not, not just the rent, but you were mentioning the traffic lights, you know? Those, I'm telling you, are the traffic or the, the red light things, those are never in the rich neighborhoods.
Nope.
They're like always on the main drag where everyone has to go. And then the, you know, say, for example, let's, let's take you and me. Say that you are a billionaire, right? Uh, life would be good if, by the way, someone like you was a billionaire and not somebody like Elon Musk, but we'll, we'll set that aside for the time being. But imagine both, and, and then I make, you know, I don't know, 50, 60 grand a year or whatever, and we live in Clearwater, right? I can pay my rent on 50, 60 grand a year, but if we get, if both of us get a $300 fucking red light ticket and you're Elon Musk and I make 50, $60,000 a year, that's like not the same proposition for, for the two of us, right?
Sure. Absolutely. Uh, for, for most people in the country, a $400 uh charge for either car repairs or a hospital visit, that sends your life into chaos. I know. I, I've spent uh way too much of my life living paycheck to paycheck. Uh, so I know what it's like to try to survive. Uh, and when I see people who have wealth, true wealth, and you're worried about losing some money for that, that could go in, in taxes to help uh the, the whole community thrive, I just don't understand that selfishness that says, no, I, I can't pay an extra uh 1% on money over $3 million earnings every year. Really? Are you going to miss it?
No, no, they're not.
But it's about status. It's about, um, it's about, at that point, like say, for example, I think like once your net worth hits about four or five million dollars, right? Eat like where I live, right? Things are inflated here. Even you're saying Clearwater is unaffordable. Um, I, my rent in Clearwater would be a deliverance if I had the income that I have here and I moved to Clearwater, right? My rent would be a deliverance. It would be half. But when I think about, when I think about the idea that, that I'm renting a piece of property and within five miles of me right now are billionaires who are like, what's rent?
Um, I don't know how much my mortgage is. Don't you have servants that take care of those bills for you?
Like, don't you have an accountant? What's wrong with you? Uh, and I-
But he's angry and he drinks too much scotch.
You know, I was, I was pleasantly surprised when I looked at your campaign site, the, the, the set of issues that you were talking about there. Like I said, we're, we're trolls and polemicists here, but the issues that we care about were more or less in line with the things you were talking about. I do care about small business, like, um, I still technically own one. Um, you know, not this podcast. If this was a small business, like this would have gone bankrupt, right? We're like hemorrhaging money and I keep spending money on gear that I really don't need. Like this microphone, come on, I don't need this microphone. This microphone's like, this microphone's like, I don't know, 15% of a month's rent. Nobody needs this microphone, right? But I was, you know, when I looked at your stuff, you know, I didn't know like what you believed in and what you cared about. I just knew that I thought you were a decent person. And then when I looked at your stuff, I was like, oh man, I would vote for this guy for, uh, where I live, Campbell, for Campbell City Council, because the, the, the things outside of Scientology that you were talking about were like kind of real kind of dinner table issues. And, um, you know, I think it's, I think it's good that I was, I was really glad when I saw your site and that it wasn't just Scientology. But I've also followed you for long enough to know that you're a smart guy and know that you care about other people. So I was, I was uh glad to see it, but I wasn't super surprised that it also like, that it, that it displayed that you, you want to make life better for the people in your community and that it wasn't just an anti Scientology campaign. And it's really important that I think that, you know, during this discussion that we, we sort of, that we, we make it clear that you're, you know, we probably would have never wanted to interview you if not for your anti Scientology act, uh, activism. But that good people in the community should run for city council and should be worried about issues. Should be trying to, you know, I, for example, uh, the downtown here is really cute, right? And if Scientology came in and started buying up property, it would destroy the little Silicon Valley suburb I lived in. But it wouldn't just be that it was Scientology. It would be that some moneyed interest came in and was buying up all the property and ruining downtown. Right? It doesn't necessarily have to be Scientology. It could be an oil company. It could be, you know, it could be, I don't know, the Moonies or it could be, you know, it could just be some developer who just wants to sit on the property because they think the, the value's going to go up. And I'm just, I'm just like really glad that you're running for office because, you know, in addition to the Scientology stuff, which like I said, I've been interested in because of my personal experience with it. I'm just really glad you're running for office because it also seems like you care a great deal about your community. And I'm, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm just glad that it's, I'm glad that it's you and not one of the people who I, I'm not going to name any names, but I think there's some people on the anti Scientology side who I think are grifters, just the same as Scientology is. I, I would never, you know, I'm never going to throw them under the bus. I think that like fighting against the cult is a good thing. But there, you know, there's a certain, there's a certain gentleman who lives in LA who if he ran for city council in his town, I would be like, oh, don't let, don't vote for him. So, um, but I'm, I'm really glad that your platform is, you know, Scientology is the elephant in the room, but there's room for other things besides the elephant.
Absolutely. Uh, you know, Scientology i- i- is something I know about. And the reason I speak out about that is because of compassion, because they're hurting people. Um, and it's a foot in the door. Uh, and it needs to be addressed in the city and, and it's not being. But I need to prove that I also can do the job and my focus is always people overpower. Um, you know, it's gotta, we gotta address more than just the wealthy developers in, in the town. The Phillies were, you know, want us to fork over $70 million to refurbish a, a stadium that's not too old. Uh, I think it's 15 years old or so. This is a $1.85 billion organization. And we have to use our money to do this.
It's like corporate welfare.
Franchises place cities off one another and almost always it hurts the city. Yeah, it, it, you know, there are businesses right around that, that, that gain money from the tourists and I, I don't want to uh, deny that or, or take the Phillies away from anyone who, who loves them here in the city. But, um, you know, the city doesn't bat an eye about corporate welfare. But if people need help, oh boy, that's tough to, to get going.
And I feel like, I feel like it'd be easier for you to, the, the organization of the Phillies, I also just feel like there's a way in which it would be easier for you to negotiate with the Phillies than with Scientology. You know, it's, it's just really, it just really sucks what happened to your downtown there because like I've seen pictures of Clearwater, like it is a beautiful fucking place. Like it is a beautiful place, like the water, the beach, everything. It's beautiful and it's, it's under- It's beautiful and it's, it's under the thumb of, and it doesn't matter if it's Scientology or if it was the Phillies, right? In the end, like what's happening is that the, the people of the city are getting the short end of the stick. And with all this money flowing around, none of it's flowing to the people, especially the people at the very bottom of the, of the economic ladder and, and
The people who work in those restaurants that SPs go and have dinner at.
Yeah. The people who don't make nearly enough to pay rent or a $300 parking or speeding ticket or whatever it is. Yeah.
Well, hey man, hey man, I really hope you win your race. Um, like I said, it isn't just about Scientology. I feel like, I feel like you, you've demonstrated, uh, through the race and just through like when you were with the Lisa McPherson Trust, when you were doing all these other things, it, you've demonstrated at least to me that you care about, you care about, you know, the folks, the people. And that you, you're running not, you know, you're not running just to stick it, just to stick a finger in the eye of Scientology. Like you may have to do that in the process of, uh, what you're doing. But you're, you're running because like you said, you go to the restaurants downtown and it's a ghost town and somebody spent money on that. Somebody maybe spent their life savings to open that restaurant, right? And so like they're, they're getting, they're getting screwed because nobody wants to go to downtown because there's this, this interest. It wouldn't matter what it is. There's this interest. It's like looming large. And you know, this interest could buy the property that they're leasing. And then all of a sudden their restaurant's gone because they no longer want to renew the lease. And like
Yeah.
This isn't specific to Scientology. You know, these things happen in cities all over the place. I don't want to, I don't want to belabor this, but, uh, the media went, uh, Ashley over here comes from Redding and there's a, a group called Bethel that's buying up all the property in Redding.
It's not only are they buying up all the property, but they're also, that's why I asked you about if there's any Scientology members, members of Scientology on the city council, because there's members of Bethel on the Redding, Redding city council. They've taken over the, um, the Redding Convention Center. And then they rent it back to the city whenever they want to have like an event there or like throw a concert or something. And they have say over who, who, what the acts are that are able to come through. They paid the, they paid off the Redding Police Department. They gave them $500,000 towards officers or whatever they needed to get a $93 million kickback to build a new campus because they're a spiritual ministry. And they, uh, will teach you, they're like faith healers and stuff. And, uh, just a couple of, just like about a month ago, there was a story about how there was a member of the church, their child passed away. They went and took them the child out of the morgue and then took it to the church and they prayed over this dead child for like two or three days trying to get it to come back to life.
See like, yeah, it's, it's, you know, it's, these are, these things aren't just Scientology issues. It's an issue of some kind of powerful organization. Organization like, for example, like I live in a suburb of San Jose, but because we're next to San Jose, no organization can come here and do that, I don't think, just because of the money around here. But if the city I lived in wasn't like part of a megalopolis of the Bay Area, it wouldn't be hard for an organization like Scientology to come in and just run the fucking show here. And it, but it's, it's not just religion that does it. It's, it's other groups that can do it. And they, they go unchecked in a lot of places.
Yeah.
You know, there's, you know, you talk about, you know, uh, shoves 16 tons and what do you get? Another day older and deeper in debt. I owe my soul to the company store. Like it's, it's, it's an old fucking story. And, and you know, in
Redding is very vulnerable because it's a very, it's 90,000 people and it's three hours from every other fucking civilization, like three hours from Sacramento, three hours from Reno, three hours from the Eureka, three hours from like Medford, I think is the nearest.
And three hours, three or four hours from the Bay Area.
And three or four hours from the Bay Area. So it's, and such a small community was very easily taken over because it's um, an older community. It's a retirement community. And it's a, a lot of recreation and fishing and camping and things like that, because it's right at the peak of the valley before you start hitting the mountains towards Mount Shasta. And, uh, the it's already kind of predominantly Christian and Bethel is a Christian faith based organization. It's just like an offshoot that's like super evangelical and it is absolutely, every time somebody posts something shitty about Bethel on one of the writing Facebook groups, I go, welcome to the next Clearwater.
But it's like, for example, uh, there's an organization run by Pat Robertson called the 700 Club and they have a lot of money and they could have come into Clearwater and done the same fucking thing, right? And you'd be you, you're, you're, you know, maybe you would have never ended up in Clearwater, but somebody like you might've ended up over there going, hey, what's going on here? So it's, you know, the, the, the issues you're talking about here are like universal. It's just through this lens of this ridiculous space alien cult.
Yeah. And, and for me, I mean, I, I never thought that, uh, I'd be dealing with Scientology as part of my life. It, it really is kind of an enhanced hobby in many ways. Cause it's just that
Don't you wish you'd have taken up a different hobby? Like, don't you wish you'd have taken, don't you wish you'd have taken up something more fun than going after a dangerous cult?
That's our
Oh, this is fun. Oh, believe me.
Okay. So, so you're one of us, one of us, one of us, one of us.
Yeah. Responsible over the years as, as I've dealt with this and, and certainly in the first year or two, I, 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 I may have done or said some things that I, I regret.
We, we understand.
Episode two.
Episode two of the Plex.
But, but, uh, you know, it's that unique combination of science fiction cults and, um, and Hollywood that drew me to, to Scientology's to begin with.
Yeah.
And the more I discovered, the more I became fascinated with, with it. And there's endlessly fascinating stories that pop up from it. And I'll listen sometimes to like NPR and they'll, they'll have an interview about some particular little fish in the ocean. And they'll have a marine biologist on who's an expert on that fish. And it dawned on me one day that there's somebody out there
Yeah.
Who's an expert on practically anything. That you go, well, why are they spending time on that? Well, because it fascinates them. And that's, I, I kind of stumbled into that with, uh, with Scientology where uh, no one was talking about it. Uh, I, I thought, well, here's a way I could help back in the late nineties when I had video editing equipment. So I started getting videotapes of like those shows that you talked about with, um, uh, L Ron Hubbard, uh, L Ron Hubbard's son. Those two shows like morning break, and I forget which the other one was.
Oh, that was late night, late, late night, uh, late night chat.
You know what? You, you, you did your research on us. You saw it. You, you, that, that shit was good.
Oh my God. Well, I was just, I was, I was engrossed. We sat here for an hour and a half and watched. That was like, no time went by. I don't think we barely said anything except for pause it'd be like, oh my God. Oh my God.
You can thank Dr. Benjamin Wog for those videos because people would, before I showed my face, people would funnel me tapes from all around the country and all over the world. And I would convert them for the internet when, but long before YouTube existed. So I thought, well, here's how I can help. And then it just kind of all grew from there. And when they came to picket my home, I said, okay, well, I'll start making videos of my own and put them online. So none of this was planned. I, I certainly didn't set out to run for a political office, but I've been urging people in the city for years.
Yeah.
We're so glad you did, we're
Speed dial.
We're like so glad you ran for office, like like it's such a, and it's, it's such a good story for us to cover too. Cause like most of the time we cover some story and there's really nobody to root for.
You give us somebody to root for.
Well, I had plenty of people to root for in my past that, that, uh, inspired me and, uh, you know, if I can encourage people to speak out, uh, you know, I think that's the most important thing I can do.
Yeah. Do you have any, uh, if you have any digital copies of any super deep cut interviews, we'd be more than happy to host and archive those for you.
I think most everything that I've had over the years, I, I've put online. Some of those, uh, shows like the, uh, like those local shows. I've had to be, I've had to take down from my channel, but other people have made copies of them uh, and shared them elsewhere on the net. I've started getting a lot of copyright violations. So what's that?
Karen. If you've ever taken something down, she put that shit right the fuck back up, dude. She don't care about copyright, like she's like, oh, you copyright striked me. That's cute. I have lawyers.
That morning break show was great with Ron.
And the guy
Yeah.
The guy who was the, the Scientologist spokesperson on both of those shows, Robert Vaughn Young.
Yes, yes.
Left Scientology. He was the one spokesperson that they've had over the years. That was actually pretty good. And
Do you think Tommy Davis wasn't really that good?
Excuse me?
Would Tommy Davis wasn't really good? We didn't even talk about fucking Tommy Davis, dude. We didn't even talk about Tommy Davis. Maybe we'll do this again because that Tommy Davis is like, he's like, he was like, he was like the most quintessential Scientologist character in the whole story.
Even Scientologists go, look at him. Wow. He's, he's intense.
Yeah. Unfortunately, that's, that's the level of people they have, uh, to throw out there with the, the training that Hubbard left for them. Always attack, never defend.
And I look at, I look at Mike Rinder back then and I look at him now and I sometimes, sometimes I don't feel sorry for him because I'm like, I, I look at how, how yeah, how truly like just dark and evil and terrifying. He looked bad, just and intense and like he could reach around any of these guys and just take a swing at you at any moment. Like there's no or jump out or some jumpscare you or something. He's just like, he was really intense. But now you look at him now.
And he's so nice.
He's so nice. He's got these big blue eyes and he's like Paul Hollywood on a Great British Bake Off. And you're like, but you were this dark, evil ass dude, but now you're cool.
But that's why this activism matters because without, without like, especially, uh, you were, I'm just telling you, you're the, one of the first people I saw that was like doing any of this stuff and like doing it in a way that like spoke to me because you were in people's faces, but you weren't like getting in anybody's face. I don't know if that makes sense. Like you were right up and close to people, but non-threatening, never, never, you know, never acting like I might behave in such a situation, right? But, but I think that like what you did and what you've been doing and what you're bringing forward into the world as a, you know, running for city council in the way that you are. Like, I'm not sure that Mike Rinder would have ever left the cult had it not been for you and your impact on Anonymous and you turned Anonymous from these horrible 4chan trolls. They fucking listened to you and then they went and had a party in front of the Scientology buildings. I'm not sure. Like, no, no, I'm serious. I don't think my, I don't think somebody like Mike Rinder might've ever left if it wasn't for that whole like chain of events, because that whole chain of events was powerful. Like people on the internet who didn't know fucking anything about Scientology were watching that and they were riveted by it, right? So like, I just want to, man, think about if you had any impact on getting Mike Rinder the fuck out of there, that's fantastic.
Yeah.
I don't think I did. I sat down, the first time I, I, I sat down with Mike after he left uh, to ask him to do a video interview for me. Uh, we met at a restaurant and at one point I said to him, Mike, how did Scientology view me when you were in? And he said, well, actually, Mark, we didn't really think about you. You were just a friendly, smiling cameraman who always waved to David Miscavige. And so, so I, you know, deflated my ego that, oh, I'm, I'm striking a blow against Scientology. No.
This is why you're gonna win, by the way. That little self-deprecate, that little self-deprecation there, that's why you're, I, that's why you're gonna win your fucking race. I'm just telling you, man, you meet anybody who will not make any jokes at their own expense and you just, you just better fucking find somebody else to meet.
Like, well, yeah, I think it's, I think it's important to always have a sense of humor about this stuff because it's so easy to sound like a ranting lunatic just talking about Scientology to begin with.
Fair. Very fair point. Explaining it to somebody else, you sound crazy. Even if you're like, listen, I don't believe this, but there's a group of people who does. Still that sounds crazy to somebody who doesn't know anything about it.
Yeah, but people don't, uh, uh, you know, people won't believe what Scientology has gotten away with. And thank God, most of the early stuff was documented in their own archives. So when the FBI raided them, we saw, oh yeah, that's how they tried to destroy the mayor. That's how they set about destroying Paula Cooper for writing a critical book about her. This is how they tried to take over Clearwater. This is why 10 top officials of Scientology went to prison for bugging the IRS and the FBI and it's just astonishing the history of this organization and how they continue to do much of the same stuff, only they're smarter about farming it out to PIs now instead of having it in their archives. It's, it's safely in the hands of PIs and attorneys.
So hey, and I, I asked, I've asked everyone this, even Andy Nolte, uh, don't look up Andy Nolte if you don't know who the fuck that is. Do yourself a big favor. Uh, do you think that the, um, do you think that what happened with you and with Anonymous and, you know, I'm trying to think of who else was out there that was a former with like Operation Clambake and all the stuff that happened in the, like in the, like, like late aughts, I guess. Do you think that it had a major impact and did, uh, massive damage to the cult of Scientology?
Well, just the birth of the internet was, uh, you know, the big changing point. Uh, because Hubbard never saw that coming. And
How, but he's perfect, but Hubbard is perfect. How could he have not seen that coming? What are you talking? Hubbard knew, he invented it.
He's OT nine.
He's OT nine. He invented the internet. Like this is heresy.
Back in the early 50s, when Dianetics turned into Scientology because he lost the copyrights to Dianetics to people he fleeced.
Wait, if he fleeced them and they got the, oh, did he fleece them by letting them have the copyright to Dianetics? Is that what you're talking about?
Now, he, you know, this is the first real money that he made back in 1950, when he had this, uh, this boom with the first book, Dianetics, Modern Science of Mental Health. So he started giving seminars and started making money that way. And because he realized, well, writing for a penny a word, the way he did in pulp fiction, uh, in the pulp years, it was not going to get him money. Uh, selling the books, that's a step up. But then they, they purchased their book. What are they going to do? Well, you have to start selling them courses. So they created a, a Dianetics Foundation and he had people invested in that who were backers of his, who ultimately had control of the Dianetics copyright as, as Hubbard fled from city to city. And, and because he lost it in 53, he decided we're going to create something to replace it called Scientology. And, and actually uh, cabled one of his, uh, assistants and said, how's everything going on the religion angle? I know if we can get it, I can really make it stick. And, and he did. But then when they got rich and powerful enough, he was able to get back the copyrights for Dianetics and, and all wrap that back up.
Funny how that works. It's funny how copyright law works if you have, it's funny how copyright law works for you if you have money.
Yeah.
I'm stunned by this.
At any rate, um, back, back in the early 50s, when he started to talk about things like the alien races, like the Marcabean Alien Fleet who had enslaved us in the past and the uh, next Marcabean Alien Fleet was on its way. So we have to get everybody on the planet up to the state of clear and get them up the bridge to be ready to handle this next invasion force. He was a little more open about some things like that back in the days. Uh, but even back then, his, 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 uh, imagination was tied to the period. So he talked about, uh, this alien planet millions of years ago that looked just like 1950s Earth with people walking around in fedoras and space planes that looked very much like the, the current airplanes, except they had
You mentioned a fedora and I just am thinking of a guy being like, my lady.
Well, I, I don't think he was ever that mannered. But yeah, I was, you know, it's the typical, what you see from, uh, you know, Leave it to Beaver with Ward coming home with his briefcase and the, and the, and the hat. Or you're probably too young for Leave it to Beaver.
Oh no, we know what Leave it to Beaver.
We know what it is.
Okay.
We weren't kids then, but we had TVs with reruns. Come on now.
But yeah, so that's, that's his imagination, uh, saying, oh, it was just like society is today. And they enslaved us at that time. They're enslaving us again now.
Yeah. That's a crazy thing to think about an advanced alien race, that it would be just like however we are right now. Like what a, like that's a bonkers thing. Like it would be like indistinguishable and indiscernible. Like we wouldn't understand it if there was like a and we might even think it's more advanced, but maybe it's less advanced than us and we don't even know it is just different than us, right? Like And we might even think it's more advanced, but maybe it's less advanced than us and we don't even know it. It's just different than us, right? Like. The fact that an alien race would look like the fifties is stupid.
Yes, exactly. And there are people who believed everything he said. Hubbard had people lapping up all this stuff. And I don't blame them. They got, uh, they got charmed by a con man. And he's managed to continue doing it even after death.
You know, I really wish that we could pull off the being a charming con man because we're not even like trying to take over people's lives or tell them any lies around here.
We're just trying to make people laugh and not be dumb.
I tried to work on the charming part.
No, we're just charming you because like you were inclined to be charmed by us. Come on now. It's like, it's like when, it's like when Scientology finds a good mark, like we've made friends with you. It's the same thing.
All right, I got you.
Hey, man, um, I wanna play a song and take a little break, but what I wanna do is, uh, thank you for joining us. This was way fun. I was like, oh, we're gonna do forty-five minutes, an hour. It's been almost two hours now. This has been a great, like, and I, I really hope you win your race because not just the Scientology stuff, but it seems like, it seems like you, you want like Clearwater to be a good place for people to live and that's. That like shine, shines through in this interview and I'm like, I'm like really glad I was able to conduct this interview and I'm glad you joined me, Media Wench.
Yay, I love our Scientology Thursdays. Thank you, thank you so much. It's been wonderful, uh, talking to you. And getting to know you and, uh, and yeah, absolutely nothing but, uh, good luck for you. I hope you win your race and out there in Clearwater.
Well, appreciate that. And, and I had a great time, so I'd be happy to come back. You bet.
Hopefully to celebrate that you've won your race.
That would be nice.
That would be very nice.
If you get really drunk on stream because you won your race and you've got a party at your place, you can still come on the show.
Yeah, don't worry. Nobody listens to watches to us anyway.
Well, this is my drink of choice there. So I'm, if I'm drunk drinking Diet Pepsi, there's trouble.
Man, I, I gotta, I, I could introduce you to a couple conspiracy theorists who think there's some shit in there that'll like turn you into like Xenu. Mark, thank you again. Thank you so much. This was so fun. Like I had a great time and it was, uh, good to make, uh, digital friends with you. I hope you, uh, I hope, I hope you come back after you win your race. Or if you lose your race, we'll console you.
Check out markbunker.com. And, uh, make a donation if you can.
And what's your YouTube?
What's that?
What's your YouTube?
Oh, um, Mark Bunker, uh, I'm sorry, youtube.com slash Mark Bunker.
There we go.
And Xenu TV on YouTube, isn't you?
Yeah, uh, well, Xenu TV will get you there too.
Fantastic.
Very good.
Thanks again, man. We're gonna play like one of these great local songs. We'll play a song called Talking About UFOs to like give you some walking out music. Thanks again, man. This was super fun. I really appreciate you taking the time. I know it's late where you're at.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.